7:30, we call the regular city council meeting of December 3rd, 2017, or 2018 to order. We do have a quorum, let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda, approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law and here place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Councilmember Lildgren to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes for the special work session meeting of November 9th, 2018 and the regular meeting of November 19th, 2018 and the budget meeting of November 26th, 2018. What are the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Knopfler to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills for checks number 99724 through 99777 totaling $348,141.10. What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Awards, donations, presentations, proclamations, we have none. Consent agenda, 2019 license renewals, approve. Accept resignation of James Kleinschmidt Economic Development Authority and approve mayor's appointment of Jeremy Hanfler, accept, approve. Airport commission minutes, October and November 2018, receive. Application for exempt permit, Horizon Health, Raffle, VFW Post 1112, approve. Building reports, September and October 2018, receive. Community Service Advisory Board minutes, September 2018, receive. Park Rick and Tree Board minutes, November 2018, receive. Planning Commission minutes, September 2018, receive. Recycling report, August 2018, receive. Temporary on sale liquor license Friends of Linden Hill event, February 2019, approve. What is the wish of the council on the consent?
I move we receive, approve and authorize the items from the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Alderman Hercock to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings and lettings, we got the public hearing information meeting, 2018 proposed budget, informational. Receive input, John?
Okay, we'll go through this again like we did in the work session for the, for the public. Looking at the 2019 budget and the, and this, and the levy, so this is the Truth in Taxation's hearing that we have each year. So going through what the major impacts to the levy will be and some other impacts to the overall budget in this presentation. One major factor that we looked at in, in terms of what 2019's budget's gonna be in the administration department, we've had some experiences relative to our staffing levels. We saw some long-term outages of employees over the course of this year, but even with that, we've been seeing some impact in terms of how we're, we're able to, to complete the work. I'd say we have an awesome staff and the fact that even with the, the, you know, long-term leaves that we had for, for some outages of employees for various reasons, we were able, we're able to get the core functions of the, of the job done. However, we're, we're really putting in a lot of extra time in order to do that and we're not being able to, to look beyond and do some additional services for, for work and, and kind of do things in a better way and be more proactive in, in the work that we're doing. Very reactive, we're very much getting, focusing on the things that we have to do and, and missing some opportunities to do some things better, implement some new, new, new ways of, of doing our business. So, so what we're looking at in terms of, of a need is, is really somebody to help offset a lot of the work that our finance officer is doing. And a lot of the components that the finance officer has deal with, with personnel and handling personnel things, i.e. payroll, healthcare benefits, sign-ups for that, administration of our health and wellness program, our, our incentive dollars that we have. So there's, there's a lot of those functions that, that's going on for Lori in that, in that role and it's something that we feel that really could be better suited by somebody else taking on some of those, some of those aspects. The rest of the, the time is, is definitely gonna be spent as support for the rest of the staff so that we can manage the time better with, with the rest of the staff and that we can handle vacations and time off and, and other things that might impact us as a whole. So this would really be moving from a staff of four that we have dedicated for administration to a staff of five. Administration serves all departments for the city, so it isn't just, just talking about things that are, that are funded by the tax levy. It's, it's impactful and beneficial for, for every department from water and sewer to police, police and fire. So this would really be a, a great support. Talking about it in terms of department and city as a whole, spoke to the department heads on it, they really do see that as being a beneficial impact for, for all of us and all of our staff. So it is factored into this budget. We are, I am estimating a little bit high in terms of potentially where the impact could be, we haven't fully scored or vetted the, where this would fall into our pay schedule, but likely have enough built in there to, to handle where that employee would be onboarded within the budget. What, so what we're currently estimating. So this is something that we've talked about in previous budget meetings, informational sessions, so, so for, for the council, nothing new for the public, maybe you haven't, haven't seen this, but, but really this is something I think would serve the city really well in helping us move forward in the future. Other key impacts, we just, we have four unions. In the past union negotiations, we did come to agreements and have a uniform pay schedule for all, all union employees and we have a uniform health benefit structure. So, so every, every employee that's still active onto the health insurance plan, they've all agreed to have the same offerings that, that every other employee has. So within each union, there isn't a change in those pay schedules or those health, health insurance numbers, they are uniform for, for all those employees. We do have an tentative agreement and those, those dollar amounts for the premiums are factored into this. We will meet after this meeting in closed session, discuss negotiation strategies and moving forward that before we finalize that agreement, but it is factored into the calculations that go against the levy tonight. So, so we're, we're at a position where one of the unions has agreed to the, to the wage adjustment for, for 2019 and, and a wage adjustment for 2019 and those impacts are in there. The other three unions haven't, haven't met to that, that final agreement. I have two more meetings with them this week, so hopefully they could, they will be onboarded with that because as one, as it move, as it, as it goes, what one union, what, they will all settle on the same, same number in the, in the end. So, so hopefully with having one established, that would be, the rest are gonna fall in line with that same number. In the budget, as it's listed in the packet, so what's out there, you'll see an IT services line and that previous years, there was no dollars expended for that, that's because it's new. And it's really adjusting out in other budgets, police and gen, police and then the city administration, finance, out some of the costs that we had towards, towards that. We made a shift this year, moving to a new IT services provider and really, it's more, less a shift about who we move to and, and the philosophy of how we're financing that. It was, the strategy before was, was built on a model of hardware and maintaining that specific hardware. We're very less a hardware-driven new technology and very much more software-driven technology in the future and we're actually just completing a move to the cloud for our financial service, our financial systems. So all of our financial systems are gonna be actually operated on a, on a software that's, that's very little bit rests within City Hall and rests on hardware that we have. It's, it's all, a lot of that's generated in the, in the cloud, which will allow us to do a lot more services and provide some new things. Primary, primary issue that we're gonna address moving forward in early 2019 is gonna be moving to an, offering an online bill pay option for, for utility customers. So that it's, it's a, they're step strategies or they're, they're coordinated strategies, we have to do one piece before we do another piece and this was the, the most critical, critical component that we had to, had to get online. So we just are, just are seeing that taking effect right now. Our firefighters, we have a volunteer fire department that's paid an hourly wage, so are they truly volunteers or are they not? But this is the way a lot of rural fire, fire departments operate and we were at $7 an hour for that hourly compensation for the fire departments, which is significantly lower than, than all of our surrounding communities that have rural fire, fire, fire departments and volunteer, volunteer hourly wages. So that, that is an increase of up to $12 an hour, but you'll see in the impact and the total budget isn't a huge, huge expense, but it will be a, a really good benefit for, for those firefighters and, and as our fire chief has explained, it's a, it's a better recruitment and retention tool for, for him and that department looking to increase that. Now, it's a, yes, it's a, it's a big number in this first year and we do, and the, and the strategy is to look at that more incrementally. We talked about this in the work session of doing things incrementally versus taking big hits at one, at one point, but we felt we had a, had a pretty significant catch-up. So this, so this budget does, from the preliminary number, we do, in our Public Works and Street Department, we do budget 100% of those staff costs within those budgets when we set the preliminary number. We move that down, cut that down based on upcoming projects that we have in future in this next budget season, budget year, based on how much time we're gonna spend off to other, other projects. So that really does help us a lot in bringing that preliminary levy number down from where it started to where, where it's gonna be today and what you're looking at presenting. So, so that's a, that's a big factor from what we saw earlier from the September meeting. Others, the other piece, we are seeing a pretty big increase in our capital improvement line, this is the equipment fund transfer, because we do have two major pieces of equipment that need to be purchased or have been purchased and we, we have the remaining payments to make. And we are trying to spread that out over a couple different budget years to offset the impact of that cost. So, so that's, that's a major component. We are looking at some desk upgrades and then another factor that was in preliminary budget but is not in this budget, the city council room. The cameras in here are analog and it's probably one of the last components in our total cable channel, our, our public access channel that has an analog system. So we can move everything, by upgrading those cameras, we'd be moving that to HD, a digital format and really kind of finishing the last gap in the, in that signal quality and hopefully make sure that we could get, bring back the best quality of signal back to the customers. And that's something that is, has been a part of the discussion with Charter as well, there's been some other components to this and I would say nearing some completion in our franchise agreement. And this is a very important factor in that franchise negotiation because there are, it's called a peg fee and that's 50 cents per customer per month that we, we collect on that and that money is used to pay for equipment upgrades like this. So it's really important for us in that, in that negotiation that we have, something that we can show is gonna account for, for maintaining that peg fee or even asking for an increase. And I think as I mentioned, one quarter of, of, a quarter increase to the peg fee, it would take us about 10 years to pay for the upgrades of the cameras and all of the systems in, in this, just in this room to, to do that. So, so it's something that we are, we're truly looking forward to, to getting that franchise concluded and, you know, and using this as a very important bargaining tool because it was something that, that Charter themselves wanted to eliminate. So another piece in the budget, library, the boiler replacement is a, is a pretty large ticket expense and then police, they have some increases in their, in their usual capital improvements relative to some new radio upgrades and if any was around in 2008 when their, the state was changing over to the, to the armor system and the radio upgrades there. Time that, that was 10 years ago and technology's changing and they're gonna have to, you know, do some more upgrading again. So, so again, that's a, that's another component of it. So we did do some decreasing to the, what the parks had in, in terms of some capital improvement items on, on that side. The increase to the street improvement, that $400,000, it's come up from $300,000 in previous years. Now this is money that we're gonna use to, to do street maintenance projects. And as we've talked about in informational meetings before, next year with the Highway 27 project, we're gonna have a pretty significant infrastructure project and time spent on, on managing that, that project for us. So even though we have that, that big project and we're gonna be taking a lot of that time, we likely won't be able to schedule and manage those, those maintenance efforts that we had in previous year. We don't wanna, we don't wanna look at taking away that money just because we can't spend it that year. This is going into, it's a transfer out into the equipment fund and we could use that to budget for, for future expenses and, and future increase to the maintenance dollars. As, as Greg and I have talked about, total infrastructure and street replacement, if we're gonna do everything to maintain the system and keep it, keep it viable within its useful life, we'd take, it takes $7 million a year. Now we're not getting, we're not asking to get to that number overnight, but it, we definitely wanna make sure that we're, we're doing more. And it is a little bit of a shift too in, in long-term past, past area where you built the street and you just let it go until it needed to be fully replaced. We can, we know we can get better cost of life out of our, our roads by doing some maintenance work and it's, and we're really starting to see some of that impact taking, taking place over the last couple of years when we, when we've done those projects and trying to stretch that, that money out as best as we can. So, so we feel it's important to keep that number increasing even for next year, even though we're, we may not spend all of that next year, we certainly will find a way to, to use that for, for maintenance, maintenance costs in future years. And not have to, you know, budget, lower, do a roller coaster thing with the budget where it comes down and then goes way back up, having, you know, big swings on the, on the impact of the levy. And the last major, major piece, we did, we, we really did wanna look at in terms of our utility funds, these are the water, sewer, storm sewers, garbage and recycling programs, how much cost we have from the internal administration piece, because those wages are all spent out of general fund budget. However, their service and the work that they do affects the enterprise funds a lot. They do a lot of work for them. All of our utility billing, I mean, comes out of, comes as a, pretty much an expense relative to a general fund expense item, however, you know, they're doing services that are related to the cost of that. So, so having that transfer out from those utility funds back into the general fund does a couple things. One, it, it puts a net, builds a more accurate cost into the operation of that, of that utility and it helps offset the levy. So when we have a utility, it's supposed to finance run on its own, run on the user rates and the base charges that we have for those, those funds. So, so it's important to really try, truly build in those costs and make sure that they're as accurate as it can be. So we've done some, did some major, major looks on that, so it was, it's kind of a bigger, it's certainly a bigger move than it has been in, in previous years as we were trying to do it more incrementally in the past. I've looked more in-depthly at, at what that, that utility transfer should be relative to those costs and that's, that's built in. So it's, it, it does two things. It does, like I said, build the more accurate costs and what those utility functions are so that we can set those user rates appropriately and offsets the general fund so that it isn't tax levy paying for utility funds. So this is kind of the big, big slide for the night. We have HRA and EDA, they have a levy that's based on a fixed percentage of what the, the MAC, a max percentage of their taxable market value that we have. We set it at the preliminary number and it's looking at that, that the county has higher valuation than what we originally anticipated, so we've actually undercut that from the maximum. It is an increase from the previous year, but it's less than, than what we, it ultimately could have potentially been if we would've hit to the maximum. Our debt service levy, actually it's a, I think the final number's a little bit more than the 250,000, I think it's actually closer to 280,000. So that, that's been a big factor. And as we talked about in previous years, we've really tried to get that, that debt service levy number dedicated down and we'll see in some charts in the next couple slides what that true impact is relative to the budget as a whole. So we've gotten it really down to the point where I think we're, we're feeling very comfortable and I would like, likely not see it decrease much from, from next year, but it's gonna, it, 'cause there are important things that we have to do with that. It does fund a lot of our street projects and infrastructure replacement and things like that that we have. So, so we've, we've done really well, we've gotten that, that number down over the course of a number of years. It's just over 1.1 million this coming budget year. We've been 2 million more in, in his, you know, historically, not, not even having to go back that far. Just even last year, we were at 1.4 million and I think before that, we were 1.8. So, so we've done, we've done a lot to bring that number down and that truly is gonna be the biggest, biggest impact to help offset this, the levy. Because our costs aren't going up, but what we're seeing is we're finding ways to, to drive the total levy impact down. So in September, what you saw in the Truth in Taxation statement, for all of you that got the blue letter, blue sheet of paper from the, the county assessor's office had incorporated an 8.02% tax increase on the city's portion. So again, as the mayor likes to point out, that's the city's line on the property tax statement, not any of the others, just the cities. So when we, we do set that higher because we don't, as I said, with the ADA and HRA, we actually could've set those a little higher if we would've had, if we would've known what the final market valuations were gonna be. However, we set them what we, we thought they were gonna come in at and we're actually under, we're, we're short. We can't go and raise those. So because we, you know, once the preliminary levy's set, that's the, that's the cap of what it can be, we can't go up and, and, and raise that anymore. So, so that, that comes in a little short, but we, we know that we have a lot of means and ways that we're gonna bring that levy number down from the time we set at the preliminary number and where we're gonna be at this, this number tonight. And we're actually looking at bringing it down to about 2.94%. Final levy from 2018, you know, 3.7 million, we're gonna be at about 3 point, we'll be at 3.8 in this proposed budget, just over $100,000 increase. And with that, based on some estimates, and this isn't final, but this is what we can project from numbers that we've gotten from the county. Our tax rate in 2018 was 75.27%, we're actually looking at 74.77%. So back again, I think I said this last year, repeating myself again, if your valuation on your, your property, so this is the top, top right corner of your property tax statement, if your valuation stayed the same in 2018 and 2019, it was exactly the same, your city costs, your city taxes are gonna be less, this in 2019 than they were in 2018, by about half a percent. So that's, that's how that works. However, most people's valuations are going up, mine in particular is going up quite a bit. So I'm doing my part to help offset other people's tax rate. So if the valuation didn't change, your taxes should either stay the same or go down. There's a, you know, the county sets the valuation, the assessor's office is very much in charge of that. If you feel your valuation is not correct, there are some means of appeal, you know, and that's not for our discussion tonight to talk about your valuations, it is only about the, the tax rate. But what we're presenting for, for levy, based on what we're projecting for valuation, we're actually looking at a rate about the same or even a little bit less. So this is projected, but what you would see if you were a residential homestead property, if you had a valuation of 100,000, you'd see your taxes go down about $3. If you're commercial and you had $200,000 of valuation, you'd see your taxes go down $16. And if you're in that $3 million industrial property, you'd see it go down just on, not quite $300. So, so that, property taxes in Minnesota are a complicated thing. Valuations are, are set by various, varied percentages, so residential homestead is actually 1% of the valuation. There's, you know, the homestead exclusion amount that changes what you'd have there, so it, it's, I could go on for a day talking about how to calculate property taxes.
Please don't.
I won't. So, but just to break it down, that's, that's what it would've been. It's, I apologize, this is hard to see, but I'll try to explain it a little bit more. So what is the levy paying for? So we have a levy of 3.8 million, how much of that is going to pay for, for what? So a big, the biggest chunk is gonna pay for the, what I call the general fund balance. So in order to calculate the general fund budget, we take in all of the revenues that we're projecting, we take in all of the costs that we're projecting and we subtract those. And usually, almost always, the costs of the expenses are gonna be more than those existing revenues that we have. The difference is made up by the levy. So that's how that's factored in and we round to the thousands when we're figuring the levy, so in some of the presented numbers, there's a, I'd say, I call it a rounding error of, of $890 that, that's in there, but in the bottom line, when it comes out, it, it'll be pretty close or they'll be, they'll balance. Because we don't budget for surplus, we don't budget for deficits, we budget right to the, try to budget right to the balance. So in 2019, that general fund balance is gonna account, is gonna account for 66% of the, the total levy. In 2018, it was only 58%. So the big difference there is that in 2018, that debt service amount that I said was 1.4 million last year and is now 1.1 million, that was 38% of the levy in 2018, in 2019 it's only 30%. The others are pretty ancillary amounts, they're small, small numbers that we just have, that have separate special levies like the HR, or the EDA is part of that. We do a, a special levy for our Fire Relief Association, a parking fund to, to maintain our parking lots and then a referendum levy that was to serve the library. So, so they're really small in to, in terms of the total impact, but need to be included in terms of the, the list. So when we look at the general fund, well, so we have the, the component that makes up the balance of the, of the levy for the general fund, so how much is that in terms of, of its overall impact on the general fund? Well, in, in 2019, that will account for about 43% of the, the general fund's revenue. The biggest component actually comes from, from local government aid. This is the state funds that are transferred to cities to help offset costs for, for general fund expenses. In previous years, this number was well, you know, above 50%. It was, is a much bigger component of our total, total budget. However, it hasn't, we haven't seen much for increases in it over time. It hasn't gone up at, at a very, at all on a much of an incremental rate. We've seen in the last five years, a, a bigger increase, one-time increase and then a small, really fairly small one-time increase a couple of years ago. So it's, it's something that I would say is encouraging in terms of the new, new governor because then on the campaign trail, doing a lot of work with the Coalition Minnesota Cities, we did hear a lot from Governor-elect Walz that he wanted to look at LGA and bring those funding levels back, especially to where they were in the 2002, which was the last time we saw the, the high, which was the highest level of LGA that we've, we've seen as a part of the state's budget. Those subsequent years, there were cuts from the governor to make, make up for budget shortfalls and then it's just been a hard thing to, to get back up those, those dollars to where they, they used to be. If you truly built in the cost of inflation, that, the component of the, excuse me, of the state budget that would be for, for LGA would be much more significant than the, than the amount it is. However, it's, it, we'll see and I, and I'm, I'm actually hopeful for once that there may be some upcoming LGA increases because the, the players are aligned right to enter, I think there's some motivation to potentially look at doing something in that regard. The other small component, we have fees, charges, our building permits, you know, zoning permits, all those other little ancillary fees that we have, they make up about 7% and then the transfers in, that was what I talked about in terms of the utility funds, the funds that they transfer back into the general fund, account for about 4% of the total revenue for the general fund. And then when you break it down, trying to get more general in the, in the expense side, the biggest, the biggest component of our general fund spending is in public safety, so this is the police, fire and emergency management, accounts for 32% of our, our total general fund budget. The second biggest is, is actually in the transfers, that's the, those, the equipment fund pieces that we had, the street maintenance dollars. We do a major transfer out for our parks fund because the parks are actually financed out of a special revenue fund, but most of the funds to operate the parks come from a transfer from the general fund. So, so that's, that's how we, we factor in that. So if you're looking at what our park funding is, it's, it's counted in that transfer line. The Public Works and Streets, that's where, you know, street and engineering, snow removal, those, those budgets are, are those are accounted for in, in that 21%. And then last, city administrations, catch-all for everything, administration and finance department, the mayor, budget, city attorney, or I know our IT service are gonna be counted in that, so that, that's where the, the final 18% comes in. And if you wanna see the, the actual dollar amounts, that's where, that's what they are for those percentages before and I do include the line of what the, the debt service levy... And I do include the line of what the, the debt service levy component is. And then we're not just, as I said, we're not just general fund in terms of our total budget, which is going to be over 6 million for this year. We are, our special avenue funds, the HRA, EDA, Parks and Rec Airport, and we're in the enterprise funds too, you know, our utility funds and the golf course. So water and wastewater being the two biggest ones, and what we'll see, and I'll talk probably more about this in terms of the, the, when we get into the budget and we get into the utility rates, garbage and recycling, seeing that kind of, it's been a, been a bigger increase in, or it's a much bigger budget than it was three years ago. But we have some change to the cart system is probably the, the biggest impact of that. So that's all I have for my presentation.
Any questions? Any input from the audience? Questions?
I have a question related to...
Up, up to the podium, the name and address, please.
Ron Flolid, 1121 Lindbergh Drive South. And a question regarding the taxation that we received for four of our apartment buildings in Little Falls. We have two or three rather, on the east side, one on the west side. And for the mayor's line, for the city, we received a 56% increase in our taxes for each one of the four buildings. We did have a 9% increase in our valuation, but nowhere near that 50, 56% that we're receiving for the city. So I suspect this might be, you know, an isolated issue, but, you know, it does seem odd that the city line is at a 56% increase. Did talk to a little bit with John, you know, he said that there is a complicated structure that the state uses for taxing, but fuzzy math aside, that's quite an increase of a 9% valuing, valuation increase and an 8% levy increase to wind up at a 56% increase on ours. So, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Ron, what was your street address again, please?
It's 1121 Lindbergh Drive South.
Do we need, we don't need no action on that, because it's just information, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Counsel, President.
Yep.
I mean, I, I did look at that, is, and he's correct, his valuation did come up, and that's a, that's a big component of it. And again, I want to remind people that they're, you know, watching, that our preliminary levy amount did come down. So, so as part of his increases, is that 8% is from the preliminary levy, and it will, and it will come down from what it was. But a big factor in that is the valuation. It's kind of, it is complicated on how you factor in valuation, and apartment complexes have a different calculation of their total market values than a residential homesteaded property. So again, I have to look in, look at all of those factors. And given the time, I'd, I'd love to break his down and do more, more deep dive into, into what's making up that 50, 56%. Because he's not wrong in terms of what our city component was on, listed on that tax, on that tax statement. But I wanted to make sure that, you know, it was, we would look at all, all facets in calculating that.
Any other issues from the council? Questions? Okay, we'll move on to lettings. 2019 Ram Promaster van from Brown Motors, award?
Yeah. As, as the memo indicates in the council packet, we are looking at purchasing a new Ram Promaster van for the, for the janitor. The current one that they have is a 1997 Plymouth van. It's in pretty much disrepair after, looking at the condition of the vehicle, we are looking at this Ram from Dodge, or excuse me, not Dodge, Little Falls, Brandle Motors, in the amount of $21,166 plus tax and licenses from Brandle Motors to be charged to the equipment fund. We did include that in the 2019 budget, but because of the, the shape of the current vehicle, we'd like to order it now, and then it'll be delivered in about 120 days.
Okay. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to award.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg, to award the bid. Any discussion?
Just want to comment once again, glad we could do it locally. We talked about that earlier. State bids typically don't work in the
Right.
...local favor. So it's good to see one work out that way.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Nothing on their old business, new business, cooperative agreement, development and operations, Camp Ripley Veterans State Trail, Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. Greg?
Yeah, clearly we have an agreement with the Department of Natural Resources in regards to the design of the trail from Mill Park all the way down to Lindbergh State Park. That portion of the agreement is essentially done. If you recall, we opened up bids this past summer, the bids came in higher than expected, and so we rejected those bids. But we would be looking at bidding that project once again, probably in January timeframe. And this next cooperative agreement component of it is the actual construction of the project. And so the DNR has kind of slated about a million dollars. The number is going to fluctuate depending on how their segment of the project comes out, but they've got about a million dollars that they've got to allocate to a particular product. And so they're looking at, to the city of Little Falls to, to designate those funds to be able to construct those segments of the trail. So tonight, we are looking at the council to approve that agreement, and we'll get the final agreement here shortly, but to approve that agreement with the DNR, and then we will be able to construct that portion of the, of the trail.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Councilmember Knopfler, to approve the agreement. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next petition, class five, alley block 20, Water and Power Company, addition number two, receive. Greg?
Just looking at receiving that this evening, yep.
Switch to the council.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilmember Hanson, to receive the petition. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I just have a question for Mr. Kim in here. What, what's our, I know with blacktopping alleys, that's 100% assessed to the adjacent property owners. What's our responsibility or stance on class five? I mean, I...
Gravel would be the city's responsibility. So we, our policy has been, we, we build the gra, the alley up to the gravel. If they want blacktopped, then it's assessed out to the adjacent property owners. So as the petition indicates, that no charge to the residents, that is consistent with what we've done in the past and with our policies.
Okay, thank you.
This one is just grass right now?
It's just grass currently, yes.
Well, I drove by there, I can see why they want it. Somebody's putting a garage back there.
I think there's two of them back there, isn't there?
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution 2018-76, consent to transfer cable franchise from Spectrum Mid-America LLC.
Counsel President?
Yep.
This is, has been reviewed by our, our franchise attorney, and they have agreed that this is acceptable to, to approve. There is, this is essentially just making sure that Spectrum, as they've gone through all of their name changes, can still do business under the franchise agreements that they have with the city.
What franchise agreement?
Good question.
Do want in discussion for the last five years? That one.
I mean, what, what are we transferring? We're, we're not under anything.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Mayor Zelka, to approve Resolution 2018-76. Discussion?
Well, I think we should reject this just to make a point. And the point is, what is the point? How do we transfer something that expired so long ago?
Except that we can, the other one kind of continues in effect until the new one gets there.
This, there is one financial impact to this, is that with this agreement, that they are going to reimburse legal fee, some legal fees regarding this document back to us. So our franchise attorney does franchise agreements for a lot of the other cities, and that was a big sticking point in this negotiation, and he wanted to ensure that that was, that was sustained. So, so they do, they do finance his, his costs towards the review of this document. I guess that, that being the one cost impact to the, to the approving it. As it stands, as, as Spectrum or Charter's legal stance or position on the franchise agreement, as they've, they've made no substantive change to the way they've operated, operated the agreement since the time it's expired, they're, the agreement as is prior to its expiration would still apply, even though it's not under the current time, timeframe of the agreement. That's not uncommon for other agreements. Our union contracts are the same. If we didn't renew the union contracts, they'd just keep going into effect. Employees don't come to work on, you know, don't not come to work on January 1. They have stance on that, or our franchise attorney has advised that that's, that probably has some legal standing to it. As we've talked about over the three years I've been here, and this has been, they, they haven't had an existing agreement, that's, that's what it stands. I would say, I do, I have, I, I am hopeful that they will have a proposal finalized for us to approve very soon. We had a call within the last month and came to all the final agreements tentatively between us, our franchise attorney, and the representatives from Charter that we, we worked with, to put, put together a final franchise proposal for us. And as I talked about in the budget presentation, you know, we're maintaining the peg fees was a critical component to, to doing that, and wanting to have some leverage to increase them was, was useful as well to pay for improvements that we're going to make towards things that are going to serve our public access chain. So, so we'll see as that gets closer, but as I said, $500 is the financial impact to, to not approving the resolution.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Resolution caller roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2018-77, 2019 levy, adopt. John?
So you'll see in the, the resolution, as we talked about in the informational meeting, levy amount is going to be, is presented as $3,854,000. This is a reduction from the preliminary levy, so the truth and taxation statements on 8%, increase from the 2018 levy to the preliminary, that's down, down to only a 2.94% increase from 2018 final to 2019 proposed.
What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I make the motion to adopt. Levy as presented.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilmember Gushak, to approve Resolution 2018-77, the 2019 levy. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd just like to add once again, John, we have talked about this at great length. I think there's some misunderstanding by the public when it comes to proposed valuation. And I'd already be the first to say that typically our proposed is high and our adopted is much lower. We've got a track record on that. I saw a lot of action on Facebook regarding the fact on how their city taxes have gone up, and they're also not breaking it out by city, county, and there's some confusion under the school of levies, what voted on and what the other levies are before it. So I just think a lot of it is the taxpayer needs to understand what's going on with it. And it's not under our control. We, we get to vote on the city levy, and, and that's the only one.
I'd say, you're, you're, Counsel President, the biggest impacts that, that are going to be on there are your valuation, just the top right corner of that sheet, and then each individual line is going to be different. And we're, we're just one component of that, of the county, the school districts, you know, there's other special jurisdictions that make up a small amount, and, you know, it's very, very minimal, only a few percent of your total, total taxes. But as we've said, we, we, we set the preliminary high, we know it's going to be high, we know when those statements come out that we're going to see increases, as we, as we heard one tonight. In the end, we're hopeful, I think with what was presented, well, just what was approved, that tax rate, based on what we have for information, should be pretty, pretty comparable to what it was the year before. So if your valuation stayed the same, you're going to say, see about the same in, in the city line of your taxes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution caller roll, please.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2018-78, 2019 housing and redevelopment authority levy, adopt. Laurie?
This is the resolution that would adopt the levy for the housing redevelopment authority. As John had indicated, we by statute are permitted to levy a percentage of our net tax capacity. The HRA levy for 2019 is set at $87,000. This is a little bit less than what we could have legally levied, but the preliminary numbers that we had from the county and the estimate we made fell a little short of what the actual tax capacities are.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to adopt. 2018-78.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Hanson, to approve Resolution 2018-78. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution caller roll, please.
Zelka?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2018-79, 2019 budget and capital improvement plan, adopt. John, Laurie?
Yeah, so as, as I presented, talked about a lot of the major impacts to that, what we see in terms of operating expense, our union contracts are going to, going to drive that. Wages are, is, is the major component of what, of our operation for the, for all the full-time and, and part-time staff that we have. It does include the, what we tentatively agreed, agreed upon for health insurance. So, so the impact of that, I don't, wouldn't see changing in the, in an increase as we, as we finalize those agreements. I think we're going to be coming into, into the finals. So, but, you know, that said, there's still some opportunity for that, that to change, but I think we're, we're on target for where we're, where we're going and what ultimately the council has to, to the final authority on, on approving for that. So, so what you see are the breakdowns for all the different departments. We are doing our best to factor in what those costs are. We, these are also then impacted into the, the rates, so the next resolution is the, is the rate discussion. So if, it was discussed in the work session, potentially increasing or changing some of the rates. If we were to approve this one, we would just come back or amend that reflective to what the, the rates would be to those total budgets. So if there was something in the utility fund that we're changing, we would just amend it, either at the next meeting for, for what the, the budget number would, would change
What's the wish of the council on Resolution 2018-79?
I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilmember Lundberg, to approve Resolution 2018-79. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution caller roll, please.
Zelka?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2018-80, establish 2019 water, wastewater, garbage, and recycling rates. Laurie?
Um, John, do you want to?
Yeah, I can, I can go into that.
Resolution 2018-79, 2019 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan, adopt. John, Laurie?
Yep, so as, as I presented, talked about a lot of the major impacts to that, what we see in terms of operating expense, our union contracts are going to, going to drive that. Wages are, is, is the major component of what, of, of our operation for the, for all the full-time and part-time staff that we have. It does include the, what we tentatively agreed, agreed upon for health insurance. So, so the impact of that, I don't, I wouldn't see changing in the, in an increase as we, as we finalize those agreements. I think we're going to be coming into, into the finals, so, but, you know, that said, there's still some opportunity for that, that to change, but I think we're, we're on target for where we're, where we're going and what ultimately the council has to, to the final authority and on approving for that. So, so what you see are the breakdowns for all the different departments. We are doing our best to factor in what those costs are. We, these are also then impacted into the, the rates, so the next resolution is the, is the rate discussion. So if, it was discussed in the work session, potentially increasing or changing some of the rates. If we were to approve this one, we would just come back or amend that reflective to what the, the rates would be to those total budgets. So if there was something in the utility fund that we're changing, we would just amend it either at the next meeting for, for what the, the budget number would, would change to.
What's the wish of the council on resolution 2018-79?
I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Lundberg to approve resolution 2018-79. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries?
Summital of Minnesota Public Facilities Authority, Water Infrastructure Project Funding Application, Wastewater Treatment Improvement Project. Greg?
Yeah, as Mr. Radmacher indicated in the previous agenda item, there's a small glimmer of hope that there's some additional grant funds available. This is that application for the, those grant funds. We are asking the council to authorize us to submit this. The grants are up to $5 million based on medium household income. Little Falls does fall on the lower end in terms of the medium household income, so we'd be, that'd be favorable for us. But again, the, the chance that we're going to get it is pretty slim, but it's worth submitting it in and hoping, hopeful that we can get some funds from that.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Canofla to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Annual reports? Announcements? We will be going into closed session. Will be no action when we come out.
No, we won't have any action items on, at this time, potentially, these, the action items that would be, would be brought up at the next, next council.
With that, we will recess to close meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 13D.05, subdivision 3C3, to develop land offer for right-of-way acquisition of real estate property along 138th Street between Airport Road and County Road 257 and 155th Avenue. And then for that, we'll recess to closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 13D.03, subdivision 1B, to develop labor negotiation strategies.